First item is rule call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Baman.
Here.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Hudson.
Here.
Alderman West.
Next item is invocation be led by James Peiser of Mission Woods Community Christ Church this evening, followed by a pledge of allegiance from Alderman Arnold.
Please join in prayer. For most gracious and loving God, we want to thank you so much for allowing us to be here together. We want to thank you for the sunshine after all the much needed rain. Thank you for watching over us and taking care of us, and Lord, thank you for this community. We come here this evening, Lord, to do business for this community, and we ask that you please be with the leaders as they, as they sit here and as they volunteer their time, help them to, to guide this community with wisdom, with strength, and more importantly, Lord, guide this community with your purpose in mind. Please be with each person this evening, open their hearts and their minds, and help them to understand what's going on and help them to, to be there for each other as a community should. Lord, we love you and we praise you in all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance.
To the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. In a true republic, where rich stands, one nation, under God, equal to the people, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is the approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Saying no proclamations, we'll move on to citizens' participation. We ask that citizens come forward to the microphone and podium and give your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
This is Claudia Johnson, Crown Property at three twenty-two, at three twenty-three, at five thirty. Uh, we've had any questions on the timeframe, maybe the configuration of, of, um, not gutters.
Curbs.
Curbs, yes, the curbs appear, that's the plan, I believe the plan is what they put in. I'm just wondering what they, the timeframe was on that.
If I'm wrong, I don't know if we have a set timeframe at the moment, because the reimbursement for that will come off of the reimbursement matis금, correct?
There has not been a time, there's no C I T.
Do you know the configuration of what it's gonna be?
It'll be similar to Front Street, make it a little bit wider section. One, sorry. Front Street, uh, but it'll be similar, it's just a straight section. We can do it and have a couple of other systems.
Well, that'd be, how will that announcement go out on, on how that's gonna be done, or when it's gonna be done?
I think primarily you're going to have a public meeting on it, kind of how we've done it in the past. Usually we'll have a final line, or at least a primary line, but I should probably make those comments.
Cause there'll probably be some temporary right away acquisitions and stuff too, right? That's the last, the last, I mean, property owners will know, cause lots of those didn't do all those.
Okay, okay. So probably going to be with them next, the next year maybe, or sooner than that?
Yeah, more than likely, it's probably gonna be, I'd say, four to five years. And simply the reason we say that is because the money for those improvements has to come from T F reimbursements from the interchange projects, so, you know, you see Christ Shopper being constructed right now, um, new development that goes in there. The city will capture a portion of that sales tax to repay, uh, the transportation bonds to do the, to finish the downtown improvement project.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So is Front Street, may I?
On the list?
Yeah.
Uh, space two B.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else who wants to address the board? Saying no, move on to consent agenda.
Mayor, I'm moved to accept the consent agenda.
Have a vote on whether we wish to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Claudia Arnold, any discussion? Saying none, now, fairly say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Alright, next up is previous business. Uh, first on the list is Cannon Street reconstruction. And I do have a request from Alderman Coleman, wasn't able to be here tonight, and not that the board was going to take any action on this tonight anyway, but he requested that he would like to be here before the board does that, and he has some stuff he wanted to share. So I will throw that out there, and I don't know if the board wants to go ahead and talk about it tonight, if it's gotten in present, or with the next meeting, what they want to do.
Mr. Mayor, I will say that the board will find, uh, a memo that, uh, Mr. Arroyo has done, uh, in preparation and research of that. If the board would like to read this, research it, think about it, um, to no preference to us. But this is well included in the packet tonight, just for your consideration.
Do you want us to go ahead and talk about it tonight, or?
So this is one before Front Street?
Huh?
Cannon would then be done before Front Street?
Well, it'd be up to the, I mean, the board would have to decide anything. Right now, there's no, there's nothing to decide on any of them. On what, I mean, if we're into C I P, I mean, Front Street's the next project, but I don't mean, if we changed items, would, I guess we'd have to amend the C I P? That's correct. Would have to go for planning zoning as well, correct? Yeah.
I'm over the way to Alderman Arnold.
Uh, I got motion Alderman, uh, Headley to move it to next meeting, previous business. Do I have a second? Second, Alderman Baman. Any discussion? Saying none, now, fairly say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll move out to the next meeting then. Next, under previous business, is solid waste collection.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, at the previous board meeting, there was a request for staff to research, um, trash providers and the schedules that they follow, uh, throughout the week within the city. They also wanted us to do some research and find out what nearby cities, um, allow as far as the schedule goes. And so, if you'll, uh, see on the dies we provided, uh, that schedule, um, we'll be happy to answer any questions about it, um, or to further the discussion that was in mind when, when this was asked of us. But, um, currently, uh, W C A, which was formerly E W S, they run Wednesday south of I seventy, Friday north of I seventy. Uh, Triple A, um, runs Wednesday south of I seventy, Friday north of I seventy. Casey Hook doesn't provide residential service. Allied Services has no residential service, as does Waste Management, which is Deppenbaugh, and, uh, Urban Disposal operates on Tuesday. And we compared that to the cities surrounding us. East Summit and Blue Springs all run, have trash, uh, providers running Monday through Friday. Oak Grove, um, has them run Monday and Tuesday. Lone Jack operates, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and Lake Ottawa has trash providers running on Monday.
Are these other cities have them the day, so those by ordinance, or just by what the trash providers are running?
I don't know, I think, Lawdawanna, they only have, uh, well, at least at the time, they only had E W S. But W C A was the only one that provided trash, uh, so I'm guessing that was in their agreement. But as for the rest of them, like, Blue Springs and East Summit didn't really have anything, and they had more providers than what we have. I don't remember, Oak Grove and Lone Jack, if that was just the way the providers did it, or if it was by, uh, ordinance or contract.
So we only have three actual residential providers right now?
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking.
The good ones that have license.
I'm thinking there's some that don't have license.
Right.
I see more than that one up down my street. Well, I didn't know who it was.
Well, yeah, we probably don't know.
Ryan Road, you seen actually picking up, or are they just using Ryan?
They're, they're picking up. Uh, Triple A and E W S or W C A has most of the residents along there, but there are, there are a few, and of course, if they're on the side side, that may be rural, which wouldn't make any difference, but if they're on the north side, so I'm just taking that and seeing what we've got going on.
Yeah, I mean, our codes officer's been keeping tabs on a lot of it, and I think he seems to be pretty confident.
Pretty confident those are only three?
Yeah.
You seen out?
But I will say, you'll see, you know, like a Deppenbaugh truck run up and down Buckner Tarzney, but they're not actually here. That's some of the pasture, and I don't know if that can be the case too on the Ryan Road for the Cannon.
I, I can tell you Triple A picks up on my house on Tuesday up north. I'm not sure if they have other days they're picking up.
And that's the, so this is what they told us, and I can tell you, after they acquired Briggs, I made a call and talked to Triple A, and they told me exactly what they told, uh, codes officer, so I don't know if they get behind it, if they have to go different days, or if they advertise.
With H O A, I mean, is everybody Triple A, or you can be whatever you want there?
Someone magically picks it up on Tuesday.
That's Triple A on it.
It's a Triple A bin.
Huh?
I don't know if it's the type of thing the board wants us to look, uh, into, um, trying to provide some more structure for the trash providers to pick up on. Certainly be happy to go any direction, um, that you'd like. You know, inconsistencies, Alderman Headley liked that, you know, make it difficult, we don't have any way to police it. Um, it's self-reporting when we reach out to them and ask them what days, but I'm sure, uh, they run all over town most days of the week, probably. So unfortunately, we don't have an ordinance or anything to govern when they do operate.
And how many, how would you really even enforce that at the end, I mean, it's gonna?
Yeah, that's, that's a policy research question, I mean, we'd have to look at other.
Even if we said, you know, if you went like Wednesdays and Fridays, which, you know, we'd have somebody out there chasing trash trucks through town, and, well, Wednesdays and Fridays, I mean.
Practically speaking, if we limited the days, then a police officer could stop and cite any trash truck that's operating on city streets, picking up trash. I mean, that gets in the gray area, maybe, you know, they could be driving.
Or they could have missed somebody's trash the day before, and they're going back to pick it up, and, I mean, could you sleep about that happening, and I mean, I don't know. And what's the, the board's thought?
Probably be worth looking into, limiting the number of days you have trash trucks moving around. I don't know what the best answer is, but, you know, at least minimize it to two days a week, maybe, or if, if that's even possible. Of course, that, you know, you gotta work with the company too, you can't just swing that on them, I don't think.
You do know that they have recycling truck trucks that are different from the trash service?
I know.
Okay. Because they come to my house three times a week.
If you can serve anything to us tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, could we, I mean, reach out to Oak Grove and Lone Jack and see if that's by, if that's by ordinance, or if that's just what they happen to have? Cause I would like to see if there's some people that have something by ordinance. I would like to get their feedback on how it, you know, how, how they're enforcing it, problems they're running into with it, you know, those types of things. Cause if we can't find somebody that has an ordinance, then Mr. Cook's gonna be inventing the wheel here. Which I don't know if he wants to do.
Is, is what prompted this research, uh, a concern, concerns that were brought forward, or complaints? I'm trying to remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, yeah, we, we get them occasionally with, uh, yeah. And typically, it's when somebody switches days, or? I don't, it, it's not as, we don't give them as much as I think we used to, I think the track, the, the Matt companies is really, kind of Triple A has been. They've acquired two or three smaller ones, I think. It used to be, we would have several smaller ones, and.
You know, one time, Blue Springs was looking at an alternative plan. Might check and see if they're still on track with that.
So I mean, they have some pretty tight ordinances in Blue Springs, because they still, they don't even allow you to sit outside the curb at all, do they?
No, it has to be.
Has to be like up against the house, and the company has to go up and get it. I'm kinda surprised that they've done that, they have them living the days.
Well, that's why they wanted it to happen, and it's probably part of the concern here, is that every day of the week, you've got trash out that, you know, are pretty roaming the animal can get into and cause a mess up and down your street, you know, trying, people trying to limit the opportunity for that to happen to be cleaned up on a one day, as opposed to every day of the week.
And do they limit, how many, they limit the number of haulers too, don't they, don't they have a cap on them?
I don't remember, I think, if I remember right, they had, let's say there was six listed.
I mean, there's multiple ways, I mean, from what the board wants to do it, I mean, you could cap the number of licenses we issue. That's when we cut back on some of it, of course, it sounds like we may have some that aren't licensed. And then, I mean, if, I mean, the two big, I mean, if they're doing Wednesdays and Fridays, then it doesn't get too hard to do it.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, I guess.
I don't know, if you want to recap for those communities, and see what they got going on, and go from there. Anyone else have anything on this? Move on to public hearing then? Say no, say no new business or presentation, move on to public hearing. There's long story annexation for thirty-two, three zero two East Duncan Road.
Uh, Mayor and members of the board, if you.
We've run out of aerial, that shouldn't be up there, that makes it a little.
A bit easier to see, but basically, the area we're looking at is north of Duncan Road, in between Rust, uh, and where the Rosewood subdivision starts. It's approximately, you know, between twenty-one, twenty-two acres, um.
Unincorporated, uh, the.
Was given a petition to voluntarily annex, um, and those two gentlemen are here tonight, Mr., uh, we have Mr. Yancek, um, and Mr. Logan. Um, you see from the aerial, there is one house there, uh, currently, I believe the plan is to leave that house. Um, but it would be a residential, uh, development, you know, which would be in line with, you know, what we've kind of thought that property would, uh, be moving forward. And this is kind of an unusual one, and you can't see it real well here, but that, where you see the little cul-de-sac to the north, that area is in the city. Um, and then this part is out, but directly to, uh, the east of that, um, in between Rust Road and Buckner Tarzney, that's also in the city. So this is kind of a pocket that's, uh, not currently, uh, in the city, and then there are a couple of parcels on the south side of Duncan Road, directly to the south, that are still unincorporated as well. Um, but at this point, said the first step, once we get the petition, is to hold a public hearing. I think said Mr. Yancek and Mr. Logan are here, and will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Uh, so I'm guessing it was, the way it currently stands, once the, the annex then would come in as, what, add?
Um, yeah, so by statute, it would have to go through, uh, um, there'd have to be a zone change, um, for whatever it's developed as. It used to be more, it would kind of come into the closest thing that the city had to what the, what it is in the county, but it does have to be a separate, uh, zone change ordinance now.
Um, would there be any costs to the city, like extension of utilities or anything along those lines?
Uh, no, sir, with the voluntary, uh, petition, if the, the person coming, coming, uh, forward to petition, that would be the one that's responsible for extending city services to the property.
And the parties that are doing this are aware of that, right?
Hmm.
Cause we already have, the roads, we already have the roads, right? Or is Rust ours right there?
Um, no.
Would that become ours?
Hmm, yeah, when you, like, when you look in the legal description, too, it includes that, the right of white junk, um, so that's where the half road improvements come.
I mean, I mean, there is, there is some cost associated with, we would have to start maintaining Rust Road, right?
I guess in that respect, yeah, it's not the way I was looking at that, I was thinking the actual.
I mean, we would be responsible, we'd be responsible for starting to plow, as in, any repairs need to be made on it.
So I guess Rust would be the case, on Duncan, I can tell you, even though, uh, we, it goes from city to county.
Yeah.
Both city and county, when there's snow out there, the plows are down, and we both do it.
Anyone else on the board have any questions before I open the public hearing?
Longer, longer term, how many homes do you expect to put in there?
At this time, we ask questions, I can't hear you.
I, I, I was just asking, how, how many homes do you plan to put in there?
Are they gonna be rental or, or occupied?
Yeah, let me, as this is a public hearing, I'll go ahead and open it up for, uh, comments both for and against the annexation. You could give us your name and address for the record also.
I can never. My name's Beak Becker, and I live at eighteen oh nine Northwest Hedgewood. And I'm, I don't even know if this is the right meeting to be at, we live right along the border of that, and we was wondering, when they zone it, will it be multi-family, single-family? Is it zoned already, or is this all just in the beginning part?
Yeah, it's, it's not zoned already, I mean, they would have to, I mean, they, they could come in and request it to be, right, zoned.
Yeah, and I can tell you, our, our discussions with, uh, Mr. Yancek and Mr. Logan, um, when they talk about fifty homes, it's single-family homes, it would be similar to what's in Rosewood now. That's been our understanding, yeah, it's not, it's not mixed use, it would just be a single-family, uh, development.
Is anyone else that has any questions, or wants to speak for, against the annexation? If not, I'll close the public hearing then, and the board has any questions?
They're currently around there sufficient to handle fifty more homes in that area?
What we have around there will be, yeah, I mean, they'll have to connect in. Um, and one thing that's a little bit unusual with this one, there's actually, across the, be the northeast section of that, that's actually where we have the north outfall sewer, um, that the city put in, and, what was that, two, mid-two thousands, probably? Um, but for the purpose of handling, um, the flow that would come with future development up there. And then we have water lines that, they're not on the property, but can be connected to and won't be a problem.
What kind of shape that road in?
Which road?
Rust.
Basically like the other, uh, county road.
Answer, but, um, yeah.
I, it's not gonna require any, um, capital outlay upfront, I mean, the road will be maintained as it is.
Now, would they, if they develop this, they have to do any improvements on, on Rust?
Yeah, and that, yeah, as we get into it, I mean, there's gotta be some road improvements that might go along with that, because eventually, like I said, the other side of the road there, that parcel's already in the city, but as development goes, um, you know, that's all, it's gotta meet city standards.
Right.
We just share ownership on Rust Road, isn't, we don't, with an annexation like this, we don't take half of the road?
Yes.
So it'll be a shared expense with Cannon and City on Rust Road for maintenance.
It should be, that's the way, yeah, I mean, if you look up a little further, it's kind of that, see the red line, like, it kind of shoots through the middle of the two parcels there, next to Rust Court. Um, but yeah, um, basically, when you start, when we work with the county on things like that, if it's something that's more open dish to, to their kind of standards, they're the ones that kind of take that, and when we have the part that's improved, you know, that's what falls on the city.
Seventy-six. Alright, not move on to the ordinances?
I have a question.
Huh?
Um, I'm located in eighteen eleven, northwest, I do drive, um, to their neighbor. Is there a way that, what you're looking at, is there a website or something, that we can see the, the ground that you're, you're looking at?
Yeah, so you can actually go to, if you Google Jackson County Parcel Viewer, um, you'll end up on a screen, it'll be just like this, where it's got an aerial, and it shows all the different parcels. You can click on, it shows ownership, um, but yeah, I mean, it's just gonna look like this open area here right now, but, but yeah, it's that whole piece that's there.
Okay, and then after, um, I know you're talking about zoning and roads and all of this, how long after, um, what kind of the timeframe do you look at before, like, there's breaking of grounds and, and development actually starts, or is everything just like?
Well, the first part of the process, so we have the public hearing tonight, and then you have to wait, um, two weeks to actually, um, have the first read of the ordinance for the board. And then it would be at the next meeting that they would do the second read. Um, but generally, the zone change would come as they would do the preliminary plat, which is gonna be more like a site plan. Um, and then after that would be a final plat. Um, so probably, I would think, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but it could be five or six months, I would think. And they have to, the actual design is not done, I mean, the developers have to get with their engineers and actually make sure the whole design works as far as runoff and infrastructure.
And is this actually an extension of Rose, Rosewood Hills subdivision, or this is just a whole separate, different housing building?
Yeah, I think they're looking at this as a separate, this isn't a phase of Rosewood, this is just them going and, and doing it.
Move on to ordinances?
Bill, excuse me, Bill B seventeen dash zero seven, second reading, it will be ordinance two four zero nine. The ideas and ordinance approving the final plat of Rosewood Hills eighth plat, ordinance two four zero nine, second reading.
Mayor, move it, we said Bill seventeen oh ten for second read, and make it ordinance number twenty-four oh nine.
I have motion Alderman Arnold to approve Bill C seventeen dash zero seven for second reading, make it ordinance two four zero nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Claudia Headley, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, um, as Mr. Cook said, the second read, this will be approving, uh, the ordinance, will be the final approval for Rosewood Hills eighth plat. It's gonna be approximately fifty-eight lots, it'll also contain two, uh, tracts. This has been approved by planning and zoning, and, uh, is the final plan coming forward to the board.
Okay, any discussion, questions? Saying none, now, fairly say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Todd?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
West?
How close they're gonna be building for our party line?
I'm zero, Mayor. Resolution, R seventeen dash twelve is a resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, Missouri, appointing Michael Smalley to the Green Valley Planning and Zoning Commission for a two-year term. Resolution R seventeen dash twelve.
Mayor, move it, accept resolution, R seventeen dash twelve, is read.
I have motion Alderman Arnold to approve resolution R seventeen dash twelve, do I have a second? Second, Claudia Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the board, this is, um, Mr. Smalley will actually be filling a vacancy that's existed on planning and zoning for how long, Cannon? Yeah, he's had a hard time finding a spot for, for this one, um, he indicated. Um, he indicated an interest in, uh, serving somehow in the city and, uh, showed out the application.
Any questions or discussion?
No, Mr. Smalley was not, he said he was not able to make it tonight.
See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Five zero, Mayor.
Next up, city attorney's report?
Nothing to report, thank you, you're right.
Next up, city administrator and staff reports?
Start with, uh, Mr. Murphy.
Uh, Mayor, members of the board, on the dais, you should have a piece of paper that's got, uh, eight questions on it. Um, recently, the city has, uh, been working with KC ATA, which is the Transit Authority, um, trying to gauge interest in, um, transit options, you know, whether it be somebody using a bus to be able to get to work or, um, or any other kind of, any other kind of errand that they would need to run. So this survey, um, there'll be a link to it in the next water bills that go out, um, and you can go online and fill it out. And for anybody that doesn't want to do the online options, if they contact us, we can always give them a paper option or paper form and send those results over to the KCATA. But it's something that we've talked about for quite a while is being able to, or make sure that people are able to get around. Um, but we've never had any actual data on that, so hopefully we'll get some responses back and see, uh, what the demand for that is. So if you hear anybody asking about what's on their water bills, this will be it.
Now, is this like a regular bus?
This is done, this particular one is done through KCATA, and a lot of the questions are geared towards buses. And I don't know if you've seen, um, on the news lately, but KCATA is kind of, um, revamping or branching out, um, what they're doing. I believe it's now Ride KC Freedom is the, um, their new title or tagline. But it's looking at different options, it's knowing that, you know, maybe just a bus or one type isn't necessarily gonna work for everybody. So this is kind of the first, uh, I guess, foray into seeing what will, what's out there. Basically, wanna see if there's demand to keep looking into it. But thanks to, like, you know, the typical, like, Oats program and that kind of thing.
Can tell you over the last year, staff, Mr. Murphy, myself, um, and Shannon, they have worked a lot on public transit options. Even though we don't have anything, it's moved forward at this point, it's taken a tremendous amount of time just to get, uh, priorities for Eastern Jackson County in front of the right people. And so we spend, uh, time going to those meetings, sitting, uh, in those committee hearings and having discussions, just trying to raise attention for Green Valley, for public transit. Um, I would suspect probably within the next, uh, six months to a year, we'll start seeing some results for that. Uh, but we are working hard on, on making sure that we get public transit options that work for Green Valley, not just, you know, a, a, a big ride express bus that you see downtown, it's something that works locally for us, for our senior disabled population and even just folks that want to participate in public transportation. Uh, next, Mr. Richard Roy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I just kind of wanna make you aware, we have our next citywide cleanup event Saturday, June third, uh, from eight AM to two PM, and it will be in the back lot of the Public Works facility. Uh, we have some flyers back in the back of the room, and I think it'll be on the website here pretty shortly if it's not already. Um, also, the, for the seniors, we'll have our pickup day the two days before, so June first and June second. And seniors will need to make sure they contact us by May twenty-sixth to get on that schedule, so.
May twenty-sixth, they have to call you?
Yes. And that's all I have, thank you. Chief Starbuck?
Saturday morning, April twenty-ninth, we did another one of the, uh, construction throw-in, turn-in operations out here in the park lot and, uh, collected, uh, citizens turned in a hundred and twenty-two pounds of construction trucks that were sealed, turned over to DEA for secure destruction. We will, uh, plan on having another one of those, DEA has those twice yearly, and traditionally, that kind of gets all year later, September, October. That's the one we usually like to combine with a shortening of that, because that's also a repot. The information that comes out, we have DEA announced the date.
Um, just a quick update on license renewals, so those are starting to go out now, I'm kind of phasing them over the next couple of weeks, just so they don't all come in at once. Um, liquor license renewals have gone out, and so you'll remember at some point, those will come back to the board for approval. Um, the hotel license have gone out, and the occupational license, like I said, are phasing, for about, probably three quarters of the way of all those going out now.
I have just a few things, um, on the twenty-second, which is the next board meeting, uh, the mayor will be appointing liaisons to the various, uh, committees and commissions that the city has. So if you have an interest in a specific area, um, let the mayor or myself know, and we'll make sure to, uh, try to get people in positions that they would like to serve.
Traffic duty is always popular?
Yeah, that's a real, that's a real big one. Uh, a couple of other things that I wanted to make everyone aware that, um, if you haven't heard, Chief Westerman will be retiring, uh, from CJC. We're going to be having a, uh, reception, retirement reception for him on Thursday, June twenty-second. Uh, it's gonna be from three-thirty to seven-thirty, and it's up at the Adams Point Conference Center. Uh, they have asked for, um, folks to RSVP, so if you would like to RSVP to that, uh, you're welcome to do that. We have the invitations that have been circulated, but if you would like for us to do that, uh, just let, uh, Kalila know, and she will RSVP for you. Um, again, it's from three-thirty to seven-thirty, uh, gonna be quite the event, so he's served, um, for over forty-one years with CJC. Uh, the mayor is, uh, actually, I'll be presenting a proclamation on behalf of the mayor, um, for his service at that event as well. Uh, almost there to the end, Dr. Moss's, uh, arrangements have been published, everyone is, um, aware that his visitation will be Friday night, Friday evening, and the funeral will be, uh, Saturday at ten AM. They, uh, have several recommendations for donations, but I did not know if the board wanted to make a, a donation to one of the organizations that Dr. Moss, um, uh, pre-planned, uh, before he passed away. Uh, so I thought that's something that I would bring up for a discussion to see if we, um, we'd wanna send an arrangement or a donation in lieu of flowers. Uh, that's completely up, up to the board, but I think it's a discussion that we need to have this evening. Any thoughts or ideas?
Typically, we would do an arrangement, since they've made prior, I would say that, you know, what we would normally send, we send, you know, as a donation, we will probably. And I would say, I mean, I don't personally have the ones listed, I mean, I think, I don't want to listen, it'd probably be, there's a scholarship fund, right, or some education foundation.
Education foundation, I would think, that would probably be a fitting one for us, if everyone's okay with that. Okay, let's do that, and let's do a donation to the scholarship fund.
No, um, in fact, why don't, uh, let's, I'll, I'll let you guys discuss that, um, off the record, how much everybody would like to contribute to that? And, uh, if you can get your donations to the mayor, or I will make sure that it gets, gets deposited accordingly. Uh, the last thing that I have is that we, at the last meeting, we talked about having a special workshop for the insurance, um, benefits this year. Uh, there's been several different dates that have gotten, um, tossed around, I know that there's a new baseball, uh, or T-ball schedule out there that wasn't out before, so we essentially have, uh, four dates. Yeah, we have four dates that, that we're looking at, um, we can do Monday, the fifteenth, which is what I believe we previously had talked about. Uh, Shannon has a park board meeting on the sixteenth, so we, we would prefer not to use that evening, uh, because he would have to, have to put off the park board meeting. Uh, but the seventeenth or the eighteenth, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday of that week, is there any night that just absolutely, well, let's start with this. Does the fifteenth work for everyone?
I gotta give it the fifteenth. And the eighteenth.
And the eighteenth, okay. Um, so.
The seventeenth is Green Valley's graduation.
That's right, that was the Wednesday night, okay. So it looks like the sixteenth.
No, I can't go.
You can't do the sixteenth?
I'm doing the police academy.
Can you do a special tutoring session for Chief?
He don't like to do that. Tomorrow, I'm learning how to do guns.
Well, let's see, so the sixteenth, that's, this is the week that we would have to do it, so, um. The nineteenth is Friday, and nobody wants to do a workshop on a Friday night. But it is available if absolutely necessary.
That sounds good to me. I don't move them faster. We're gonna go find the burglar.
What time you start?
From my understanding, you, you attended this at least twice before.
I've gone to the one in, uh, Independence, I went to the first one here, that is nothing of the caliber that this one is. They finally got their stuff together and they've got something highly interesting. Thank you, I'm going.
We have to do that week?
Yes, because we, unless, see, here's what we're trying to avoid, in the past, the board does not like having a workshop on insurance and then moving straight into approval that evening. Um, we could do a workshop on the twenty-second, but then, right after that, you're voting on what we've anticipated the board's going to wanna approve, so we're trying to, by having a workshop the week before, have the discussion.
So we have to do the first read on the twenty-second?
Yes. The first read on the twenty-second gets us the second read on the twelfth, which gives us two and a half weeks before.
Well, we could do that.
The benefits going to effect.
What if we do, is there anything else time sensitive that we couldn't make the twenty-second a workshop? And then call, they meet, call special meetings the first day in June then, that'd be what we would discuss on the twenty-second, we would discuss then, but the only thing on the twenty-second would be insurance. And this first Monday in June would be a regular, like, meeting, and then have us come back the twelfth and the second read on it.
Does that work for everyone, man? Yes, that's.
Does that work for my schedule? See, I mean, I don't think I have, I, I think the fifteenth was only Monday, I had it. Yeah, so if we keep it on Monday, that should be okay, cause he's.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that, yeah, I just wanna make sure we have a chance to sit down and discuss benefits.
We would do the workshop on the twenty-second, then we would have a regular meeting on the fifth? The fifth. That would be, that, so the only change would be, we would be here the fifth as well, typically, we have the fifth off, and we'll be here the fifth for a meeting. We, we would be here the twenty-second anyways. I mean, there's nothing, we would have the ordinances tonight that'll be on for second read, so we're not pushing anything back.
And that would be at seven PM regular meeting time?
Yeah, we could do seven if that's, I mean, usually our workshops are at six, but I think that probably works better for some board members than having it at seven. And that's completely up to the board.
I must down that jury duty that week, so, I don't know, I don't know what the trial's gonna be like.
Dale, does that work for you? Does that work for you? Have you solved any crimes those nights, Nancy? All right, let's get that done.
All right. We will, um, send out an email to the board to remind everybody of that. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, next up, Board of Alderman reports and comments, Alderman Arnold.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Totten?
Well, I hope we consider, uh, Front Street as a basic, uh, need to take care of. Thank you.
Alderman Hedley? Alderman West? Alderman Bammon?
I have a question, and there may be a comment depending on your answer, um, how often are speed limits evaluated or re-reviewed?
Uh, typically, uh, if we start by getting complaints or whatever, that's what that, that would be referred to as the traffic committee, I was joking about. And the neighbors look at it and, if it's an accident, now, if it's on one of Modoc's roads, you, good luck talking to them.
Different deal. Is, uh, is it normal for there to be feedback on the speed limit posted for Mentor Road?
I would say that we've, we've heard consistent feedback, and that's because, um, Jackson County has one half of the roadway and the city has the other half, and so, uh, it, it has come up, and I can't remember off the top of my head, is the city side twenty-five and county side thirty-five, is that the complaint? We looked at it several times before.
I think that's what it is. Yeah, I think we're lower.
And in the, the, in fact, in, in the past, whenever we had traffic advisor, traffic committee meetings about it, transportation committees meetings about it, um, the citizens that were along the roadway were opposed to one half of the road matching the other, just because they wanted the lower speed limit. It's for similar reasons that we have fifteen mile per hour zones still in town.
So the speed limit that's there is more, uh, as an outcome of the residents along that street preferences?
I, I would say up to this point, yes, it has been, it has been discussed several times, we're always happy to take a look at it.
All right, thank you.
Next up is mayor's reports.
Uh, this is one more thing for next meeting, along with, uh, the boards and commissions that, uh, Ryan spoke of, we will also need to, uh, vote on and approve a mayor pro temp as well, so be thinking about know that, and who wants to do it, and talking to somebody to get them the nomination and all that good stuff. Uh, that is all I have, is there a need for executive session? All right, is there no need for executive session, if no one has anything else for regular session? Did I gotta talk about this in the meeting?
I just wanted to remind someone of the boy Grouse on the twentieth.
Figurid Grouse, twentieth, I believe they are stepping at the partnership office, right, so I, I think you can be, put on the map or something, I believe, if you go to the partnership office and sign up.
I think there's a huge, uh, you can do it.
Yeah.
That's, that's who, yeah, that's who we've been referring people to, at, at one point, we were, nobody knew who was doing it, and recently, this.
Yeah, I think they put it on Facebook that they were accepting, uh, there, I think it's a small fee, and they put you on the map, it passed out, like, this is around town, so. All right, no one has anything else? All right, well, jury.